Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our regular meeting. I'd like to announce that we had an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss real estate and personnel matters and one legal matter. Mr. Gentile, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. Leavitt is away on vacation. Mr. McCloskey?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. McGarrett?
Here.
Dr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
And Mr. Wexler.
Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm going to deviate. Mrs. Bocella, would you please come forward?
Good evening.
Good evening.
To fill the vacancy that now exists in our police department, I will read the names from the certified entry level list the board approved on April the 9th, 2018. The names are first Lawrence Todd IV, Anthony Hughes, Matthew Huffelman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Lawrence Todd IV.
Second.
Lawrence Todd IV is nominated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Todd. Chief, you want to?
Congratulations.
So, we're happy to have Lawrence Todd IV. He comes from a little history here in the township. Obviously, you can see we have Larry Todd III here as Sergeant of Police Department. So Lawrence Todd IV was born and raised in Haverford Township. He's married to his wife Audrey, and they currently reside in Clifton Heights. Lawrence is the son of Haverford Township Police Sergeant Larry Todd and his wife Nancy. Lawrence is a grandson of Lawrence Todd Jr., who was a longtime dispatcher for the Haverford Township Police Department. Lawrence is one of nine children. Lawrence graduated from Delaware County Police Academy in December of 2016 and was hired by the Alden Police Department in May of 2017 as a part-time officer. Lawrence left Alden for the Brookhaven Police Department in August of 2017 and has been employed by them since. While working part-time as a police officer, Lawrence worked full-time in mainland health as a security officer. So hopefully with the pay increase, all those part-time jobs will stop. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hey Larry, congratulations.
Congratulations, Ed.
Congratulations.
Why don't you get the three of you guys first? Let's get the generations with the chief and we are, but we're going to get their picture first. Good tradition here. Our next item is a presentation by Adam Alexander with Faisal Architects, the concept plan of the Skadium project for the final phase of all work on this site.
Yeah, it's up there, but the pointer seems to be stuck. Maybe from the cool swiveling. I don't think that's, let me go grab a balance.
Segal.
I'm telling you about your secret.
I'll see him.
No?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Adam Alexander with Faisal Architecture. Really a pleasure to be here this evening to share this project with you. I've been working with the township, we're a little over a year and a half, on the design of the Skadium Plaza. The photograph that you see here is an aerial shot, a Google image of the skadium and the plaza in front, which is right outside the municipal building here. I'm going to go through a couple of slides just to show you some of the imagery of what we've come up with and the concept plan and just some precedent images of what things are going to look like there as part of the project. So this is a concept plan. You can see the orientation, the skadium and the roadways on either side, Darby Road. The project consists of removing the concrete that's outside the skadium, as well as some of the planters that are there. You know, it's in need of some refreshing and some updating. Part of the design process was to consider the use of the space, not only the entry to the building, but also as an entry into the township. It's really the first thing that you see as you're approaching the municipal building. It will also now act as kind of the front steps, if you will, to this brand-new, beautiful building that we have here today. Some of the main features that you're seeing, the boxes, that's the new concrete, which will be accessible as far as ADA accessibility to the front of the building. We've created a plaza, the brown, kind of curvular areas or seat walls for people to sit. Behind there will be landscaping that is native, but will also act as a way to infiltrate rainwater. We are keeping the monument that's presently there. You can see that's the lighter beige box that's present. The main feature is a spray feature that's a recirculating water feature that will not only act as a place for people to congregate and cool off, but at night it also will glow. It has some lighting that will feature the space. It's enclosed with some seat walls. Off to the top part of the site by the Haverburger, there's also a plaza space that's going to be expanded with a steel arbor for shade, and there's also a seat wall in that location. We are incorporating not only concrete, but there's pervious pavers that are being part, that are included in the project. We are removing the amount of impervious surfacing on the site, and we'll be infiltrating that water back into the groundwater. Those are kind of the major, the overview of what's happening out in the front. There's also some other things that I'd like to share with you. So here's, this is our palette of the different colors. You can see on the one side of the page, those are kind of the existing building colors. At different times of the day, the building is different colors, beige and browns. So we're kind of playing off those natural themes. Colored concrete, we have concrete block seat walls that are going to play into the natural elements of the area, as well as capstone, which is the top piece, and then different pavers. You can kind of see the stone inside the pavers for infiltration, using grays, blacks, and natural colors. This is a example of what the water feature will look like. What you're seeing are the actual, what the water, how they will spray from the nozzles, just to kind of give you an idea. It's not a pool, it's basically a spray area. There'll be drains which will capture the water and it will recirculate. We will not be wasting water, it'll be recirculated every year. At night, it will really be a beautiful feature. These domes will change colors, they're LED, from blues and reds and different variety of colors. So even when the water is not spraying, it'll glow and it'll have a nice feature to it as you're driving. We're also incorporating lighting into the site for security and also to kind of create some atmosphere in the space. The lighting consists of lighting that will be under the capstone of the seat walls, as well as some decorative pole-mounted fixtures. We're also going to be illuminating the facade of the building. As well as the seating area on the side, that structure will also be illuminated. All downlight, no glow, no sky glow. It'll be all enclosed within the site, not only to make it aesthetically pleasing, but also safe. This is the imagery of the structure on the side of the building, just to get an idea of the scale and the proportion of what it's going to look like. As I mentioned, we're going to be, because the building is completely concrete and block, we're going to soften the building with a green screen. It's basically going to be anchored to the building, and we are going to grow different types of vines up the side of the green screen to kind of break up the concrete and also soften the space as well. These are just some examples of what that looks like. Plantings, plantings are going to not only tie into what's happening outside the municipal building here, some native plant material, Black Eyed Susan, some echinacea, you'll be color, it'll be seasonal interest as well. As you can see from the picture at the top, some red dogwood, celeria, plants that are hardy, plants that don't need a lot of water, and plants that are going to have some seasonal interest throughout the site. So, we put together a project cost for this project, which would include the demolition, the reconstruction of the plaza, the water feature, the steel structure, as well as the lighting. We are estimating $387,000 for the complete project. Now, keep in mind, that's our estimate based on, you know, where things are in the market, based on projects that are similar size and scale. This project would be put out as a public bid, we would solicit bids, and the best qualified, best bid for that project would be awarded. We're looking at this as being a three- or four-month process to demo and reconstruct, done under one contract, under one general contractor. Once again, here's an overview of the project. It's definitely going to beautify the entry to the township and really create a nice statement while really elevating the entry to not only the skadium, but the entire township. That's all I really had for you today. If you have any questions, be free to ask. And I also brought a couple of hard copies if you'd like, and saved on the hard drive here is a PDF of this presentation.
Just have two questions. Maybe the first one's not for you, but funding, what's the source of funding? The second question is, what are the operational costs? Obviously, having fountains and so forth is not something that's going to be insignificant to maintain. So, what are the operational costs of going forward?
But the first question for the town chairman.
And Mrs. Amy can chime in as well, but as you're aware, with this project, for this building here, is running under budget because of the good work of Amy and Lori, and we thought that it would be an outstanding opportunity for us to, since there's already borrowed money, that we reinvest in that to the, into the front of the skadium, which is a project we've been hoping to accomplish for a number of years, and it's well-used on a daily basis, especially during Havertown Day. So I think this would be an outstanding opportunity for us to invest these funds to make this almost like a plaza for the community. We have the funds for it.
Okay, so there's no grants, there's no grant money available?
We could certainly apply for grants, but we, I think we use up most of our grant opportunities right now. But didn't the grant money come with this building, Larry? There was grant money given to the skadium? Well, we did get a grant for this building here, yes. I mean, didn't that pertain to the skadium also? No. No?
Larry, you saying this is in the budget for this year or next year?
This year. We actually have the funds that are available to start this project. Once this board deems fit for us to move forward, to put it out on bid, and then we'll come back to you again for final approval.
What would it look like if, I mean, just thinking out loud here, if we were to take the fountain away? I like the landscaping and all the kind of aesthetic improvements, I'm not really consoled on the fountain itself. What would that reduce the cost by?
Well, the fountain, in our opinion, the design process and going through the iterations is not only have it just be a plaza, but a place for people to congregate and gather and kind of activate the space a little bit. So, it really has, not only is it just something to look at, but it really will help bring people to that space in a variety of different ways. And in the off-season, it could still function as something like, something of like art, almost. Operationally...
I'm not sold on the fact it's going to be a gathering place, quite frankly, but go ahead.
The operator, just to answer your question, operational costs, there are going to be some costs associated with starting it up, shutting it down, very similar to an irrigation system, is how it functions. We can put a price tag on what that might be on an annual basis and see what that is. I'd have to spend a little more time to figure out exactly what that would cost on an annual basis. As far as everything else on the plaza, there would be minimal, minimal costs in the upkeep based on the materials we're selecting. There might be some sealing of the concrete or some plantings that have to be replaced, but that would all kind of be, the plantings would be covered by the contractor. After some, they'll take on their own. Other than that, I don't see any other costs associated with it.
Mr. Lewis was asking, is the total price, I think he said it was $387,000? We would eliminate the sprinkler system.
The fountains, just the fountain, all the other aesthetics.
Fountain, we're estimating to be around $35,000. Now, that's not only the actual features, there's a whole pumping system that's associated with it. You can see in the image, it's off to the side, is that gray rectangular shape. It would be an above-ground box that would contain everything that you would need to recirculate the water and all the valves. We looked at putting it inside the building, that wasn't an option. So, for the actual piping and everything associated with it, that's somewhere in that $35,000 to $40,000 range.
It'd probably be used, what, maybe six months out of the year, something like that?
Well, the lights will stay, the lights can stay on, so it'll still have some aesthetic value, and that would depend when we start it up and when you close it down. So, yeah, I mean...
I personally like everything except the fountain, that's my one.
One thing that we may be able to do is when we actually put this out on bid, and you can bid it, it is alternative. So, you're going to, if the board, if, once it comes back... We can add and subtract, right? Okay.
That's definitely an option.
Are we referring to the fountain as the spray area? Is that what you're...
That's spray, the spray then.
So, this is exactly what it would look like.
I would just, I mean, I'm welcome to consider all the options, but I do think that, given the location of the fields and everything back there, that it would get a significant amount of use during the six months, or whatever the time period is at the warm weather, so. But that would, my opinion, we're obviously...
Also designed to keep a lot of open space for, you know, Haverford Day, we've got, you know, a place for bands to congregate. There's plenty of seating for, you know, for people to sit outside, as well as the entry to the skadium. We also didn't want to make that, you know, inhibit any flow of traffic, pedestrian traffic. That's why it's offset a little bit and enclosed with seating. So, it's prominent, but it's also enclosed to kind of create a smaller pocket park within the larger plaza. So it's there, but it's not the most, it's not the strongest feature in that it's all a lot of ground-level improvements.
Any other questions? I'll offer mine. Have we done, I mean, we get the minutes for this ice rink advisory board every month. Have we looked at the funding? I mean, I've always seen shortfalls, they need new locker rooms updated, rubber mats, and ongoing maintenance of chillers, ice, boards, glass. Have we, before we take $387,000 on an aesthetic project, do we have enough maintenance funds set aside, and have we done the projects that are necessary and required to make, to keep the skadium functional for hockey, figure skating, and general public skating to do that? Because looking at the minutes, it seems like they're always looking for money to do improvements on the inside. So, I just posed that question for you in the recreation.
I can answer that question. Certainly, we've actually invested significant dollars, and obviously, the ice is almost new. The boards are at the same age, they're in outstanding condition. We've done work in the locker rooms, we just upgraded all the electrical system and the entire building. Today, I approved a new emergency generator, and the new fire alarm and smoke carbon monoxide detectors are being completed next week, they're underway. So there are aesthetic improvements that we've been making over the last few years as well. Some big-ticket items, I believe, are the ceiling, Amy, and we have that for next year's capital fund.
Actually, that's part of the bond issue that we're going to talk about tonight, and the rubber flooring improvement as well.
Okay.
Just one question. Talk about, can we get fountains like the ones we have throughout the township? If you want to put a fountain there?
I wouldn't recommend...
Like the ones up in, you know...
That becomes a permanent structure. This is similar to what I've just recently seen. I mean, I'm not a big city traveler, but down in center city by City Hall, they actually have them. So, what this allows is, if you have a fountain like we received, the two fountains we have were purchased through grants, there are structures that stay there and then becomes permanent, you can't move them. This doesn't take away from whether you go with the fountain or not, even with the lighting, it's not going to take away from any, you know, you may have, you may want to have, start having bands there on the weekends, or Havertown Day, there's multiple other type of recreations that they can use. You certainly don't want to put a permanent structure. I wouldn't recommend a permanent structure there, because you're going to take away and commit some real estate there that would obstruct from future activities.
Let me ask you a question with the, as far as the ice rink committee. I agree with Bill. I mean, when I was on that committee last year, there were a lot of issues inside that skadium. I mean, I like this concept because it is an ugly building, and it would enhance that whole area, but, and no offense to the people that love the skating, I mean, I love hockey too, but the building's ugly. But there are, I mean, the locker room specifically was a huge issue, and I understand the ceiling, which I'm glad it's going to be on next year, but have we talked to, who's the liaison for the ice rink this year? No, I'm not. I'm sorry.
I think the hockey, I think the locker rooms are great. I...
I mean, have we spoken with them? That's all I'm asking.
I don't recall the gentleman's name.
The committee meet with them.
That runs the facility, but he...
Rick.
Rick has been, was part of this process.
Yeah. This is part of all the things they want to do at the skadium. I mean, I, the, you know, we've done a ton of inside work that people know about if they skate, if they go in the skadium. You know, we now have this brand-new building, and we have this beautiful landscaping here, and it doesn't make sense for us not to modernize and think about the aesthetics of the front of our skadium, because that is, for the most of us, the front of the township before you come into here. So, you know, whether or not we want to talk about, you know, doing it at less expense or what are the other priorities, I do think it's a mistake for us not to understand the aesthetics and the curb appeal of the front of the skadium. It is one of our, it is our most profitable township building that we have, and it is, and it's a very important part of our township assets. But, nobody's talking about, you know, not making the badly needed repairs so that we can do these, it's all just part of the package.
And this is also not just a project for people to use the skadium, I mean, this is...
Beautification.
It's for the township, for all residents.
Right. 25,000 people a year on a nice day come to Township Day, and 3/4 of them pass in front of the skadium, in, you know, and that's, you know, that's where we put the bands, it's where we do a lot of things on that day. And now, it is the entrance to, you know, for folks who don't come off Manoa Road, it's the entrance to the main township building now. So, I mean, imagine if our entrance off Darby Road to the crack and to our new Township Center, you know, wasn't, you know, we didn't finish that job, we just said, well, you can drive halfway up the road and then you can see what the new crack center looks like. So, I mean, this is, this is important for us to modernize our township and to, really, frankly, not to leave any stone unturned, as far as I'm concerned.
I agree, and I agree with everything you're saying. My question is, and I've worked with that committee when I was there last year, they're on top of things. Have we, do they bless this? Do they agree with this? Have they been told about this?
I believe this is their...
I mean, I know Rick said...
This is their initiative.
Yeah. Day one, day one, we met with Rick, and we did, we did a little sketch on what we wanted to do, and we modified the design to not only meet, you know, the township's needs and requirements, but also to make sure that the skadium and Rick, and I guess the committee have, you know, given their input, that's why we created a larger space on the side by Haverburger, that's why we opened up some of the plaza area in front of the building, because he was concerned about, you know, there not being enough room for people to drop off. And we're also improving kind of the accessibility from the side of the building to the front of the building as well, some of the slopes.
And this year, the skadium, I mean, in addition, I mean, we're, you and I are hockey fans, Steve, and we, but our figure skating organization ended up hosting, I think statewide and certainly regional championships that drew a great deal, you know, high attendance and a great deal of attention, and we certainly want more of those. And frankly, decisions about where to host these things are going to be made based not only upon the capacity and the, you know, the ability of the inside of the facility to do it, but the attractiveness of the entire facility is going to play a factor as well in our ability to continue to attract statewide and regional competitions.
I can make one more comment? I just want to make sure that we don't get a perception that the township hasn't, has not been addressing all the needs of the inside of the skadium we have. Every time it was been brought to my attention from the electrical system, we acted upon it immediately, and we invested, even with the new rink and the boards, and again, the next big initiative will be the lights and the ceiling, or not, the lights were done, but the ceiling...
done, but the ceiling, I mean, we, we've done well over a million dollars to that. The, the last thing I say, again, it's, the front, it's the front door of the stadium, it's like the front door of your home, you can have a beautiful home inside, and if you want to draw people in there, if the front of your house looks dirty and messy, people are gonna assume that the inside looks the same, so I think you need to start from the outside, same thing as.
Yep.
Uniform, I'm real big on uniform, you have the most professional-looking, I mean, the most professional police officer, but if he gets out of the vehicle, I'll use the paramedics, from my history, they have a paramedic who's well-skilled and knowledgeable, but if he gets out of the vehicle and looks like a slob, most people are gonna think he's a slob, so you gotta look professional, act professional, I think it's important to clean up the front of the building, whether you go with the fountain or not, it's, it's up to the board.
And it, and it, the, the broken window theory of, of, of property management as well, if you just, you know, if we, you know, the impression people get as they go in is going to direct and, and is gonna help, you know, it's gonna help shape their behavior in the facility, so I, I agree with you, but certainly, I wouldn't want to give anyone the impression that I, or anyone on the skating advisory board, or skaters and ice skaters and figure skaters out there, don't appreciate and don't enjoy the, the speed with which the township has, has addressed concerns as they've come up, and frankly, the commitment the township has made in the last 10 years, I mean, I came on this board at a time 13 years ago, when it was hard to cobble together a majority, who really thought the stadium had a future here, and it's so great now to, for it to be treasured as, you know, as one of the important assets of our, of our township, and certainly, a very important part of our recreation department, so, I certainly appreciate everything you've done, and, and I know everybody working on the skating, on the advisory board, and I know the staff in the stadium, and I know all the skaters out there appreciate that everything, everything that's been done.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Wexler, can I just say that, in the audience is Mr. Connell, who had a lot to do with the stadium last year, and he is the president of the board, and also Lori Hindenwood up over here, our zoning officer from last year, they did a lot of work, and they were a lot of help in getting what we've gotten so far, and the stadium is a 100% success.
Thank you, Mr. McGarrett. Our next item is the township auditor update, Mr. Anderson.
Hello, I've reviewed the expenditures and warrants for this period, I found no material irregularities, and all my questions are satisfactorily answered.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, any questions? Police Department crime update.
Yeah. Oh, here comes a report.
Thank you, Commissioner, the police monthly report for the police department for the month of June, we had 37 criminal arrests, seven juvenile arrests, 176 traffic citations, 30 non-traffic citations, 127 written warnings, and 454 parking tickets. Aggravated assault attachment at Edmonds, we had, it was a road rage incident where a suspect was arrested, there was no injuries, we've had four burglaries, Georges Lane, Brinmore Place, Powder Mill Lane, and Tell 1212 Township Line, where a suspect was identified and arrested, the other three burglaries are still under investigation, had a motor vehicle theft from 26 Myrtle Avenue, unlocked car with a key fob in the vehicle, the vehicle was recovered within eight hours in West Philadelphia. Now, once again, I spoke too soon, I think, at the last meeting, we had 26 thefts from autos, and once again, I say it's not just Havreford Township, it is a regional problem. Of those thefts, it happens all over the township, I'll say, most of them were unlocked cars, the exception, of what happened up at the Crack on 630, we had multiple cars broken into, where windows were smashed, also a few at the Dog Park, now, this is related to the East Coast gang we spoke about, while one of our officers was in Voorhees, New Jersey, last week, he was there at a baseball game with his daughter, the same thing happened there, and he was back and forth to his vehicle three or four times, didn't see anything, and walked out another time, and police were there, nine vehicles were broken into, that was on the news, Upper Darby's had the issue, Marple just had the issue just the other day, they identified a, a vehicle with, which is a rented vehicle, and this is the problem, they go from place to place to place, it's, there are arrests made, but the problem is, it just continues, it's, it's part of, it's part of that gang that's very, very difficult to, to arrest, they're very sophisticated, they get credit cards, when, if they get into a car, they'll move in, make a couple of dollar or two purchases, then, once the credit card goes through, they'll, they'll, they'll whack a, a big box door for $3,000, $4,000, and then, once a credit card gets rejected, they move on to the next, it's a critical problem, and we're working our best, we, we've had discussions what we're doing up the Crack and the stadium, I had lengthy discussion with Tim Denny, how we can make some changes up there to help alleviate some of these problems, but it's difficult to manage, and without speaking publicly what we're doing, we are making moves to, to help address the problem, but it is a serious problem that I've been talking about for a number of years now, sometimes it's embarrassing that we can't make arrests, but when you look regionally what's going on, it's just up and down the East Coast, so, we're well aware, and so are the other police departments, like I said, the problem is, arrests are made, but it just continues and continues, so, we urge people not to keep valuables in their car, if you're going to a wedding, if you're going to the Dog Stoke Park, or you're going to a kid's baseball game, or football game, or whatever, to exercise, put, lock everything in the trunk of your car, leave no valuables in your car, because the chances of them getting broken into are, are high at this, at this point, we thought it really dropped down dramatically, but it's going sky-high again, so, but we have made arrests, there are juveniles from Philadelphia, Upper Darby, but it just, it just keeps on going, so. Any questions?
Have we considered video surveillance at the Crack, in that parking lot?
Tim, about that, we are, we're, we're making some improvements along there, I'll just say that, okay, so, I'll move on, I, I talk a lot about that, so, with the thefts from autos, aggravated assault burglary, we had a sexual assault in the township, juvenile was arrested and placed in detention, we had a weapons offense where juvenile was arrested for underage drinking, bringing two knives on the school property, we had seven K-9 usages for different townships, including Havreford Township, with a couple arrests when the K-9 was deployed for drugs, that's the report for the month of June.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any commissioner committee updates?
No, Bill, other than, we don't have an update yet, Dan and I, on the traffic, traffic improvements that we spoke about, we do know that a letter, I think it was from Dale and Leach, went to the governor, and we are awaiting a response from, from the governor's office, Dan, do you have anything to add?
No, the letter, yes, went from this, our state officials, Leach, Rep. Santora, and Vitale, and we're waiting for further word.
Yeah, they all signed the letter, which was, which was great, and, so, we're hoping for, for response to improve the traffic, I mean, we, we were told that, Dave, you said something about the adapters there?
The state, the state anticipates putting the adaptive project, which takes us from the Triangle to Old West, Hester Pike, anticipate putting that project out on the street, end of summer, beginning of fall.
Thank you.
For progress is being made, thank you, Mr. D'Amelio. Next item is the citizens forum, we have no registered speakers this evening, is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the board on any issue that's gonna be voted on this evening, must be an agenda item? Yes, okay, if you'd please state your name and address, and then.
Nicole Maclean, M-A-C-L-E-A-N, 225 Ivy Rock Lane, Havertown, I am not a beekeeper, I'm speaking for my beekeeping friends, I just have a question, the ordinance that is before you as a first reading tonight, do you read the whole ordinance in the first reading?
We can.
Would you?
Okay.
Thank you, that's all.
Read it aloud?
Yes. Yes, sir.
My name is John Eli Saintmore, I am a beekeeper, I live at 56 Brookline in Havertown, and I also came to discuss this ordinance, I'm also the beekeeper for Harvard College and Harvard Friends School, and so I wanted to discuss this ordinance, and also, there's the Pennsylvania State Beekeepers Association has worked with, which I'm a member of, works with townships as well, to discuss best management practices for beekeepers, so that is what I'm here for as well.
Good, thank you, sir.
My name's Lauren Warner, I'm at 430 Lanark Avenue in Havertown, I'm a beekeeper also, I also have a company that is called Believers, and we have people in Havreford Township, Ardmore, West, wait a minute, Media, Newtown Square, Wynwood, we have people and facilities sponsoring our hives, we upkeep them, and I'm very interested in this ordinance, because my business could be at, having problems if it's going to put a damper on how we run the business, so, I'm definitely interested in hearing everything you have to read, and, thank you.
Thank you. There's an ordinance on the agenda about beekeeping, so if there's an agenda out there that you could take a look at.
My name is Samuel Crackow, I live at 430 Lanark Ave, I am the husband of Lauren Warner, I am also a co-founder of Believers, I found out the last minute about the ordinance, and I just wanted to say that we have a considerable amount of investment in our company, and stable members of Havertown for well over three, four years, and we are scared, and I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Megan Malagan, I live at 214 Walnut Place, I, along with the bee ordinance, I just, I am not a beekeeper, my neighbor is, and live right next door, so if there's any concern about neighbors, I, I have three small children under the age of four, and I have no concern, so, from a neighbor, just wanted to say, there's no concern here, thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? On any, on any agenda item, doesn't have to be bees. There being none, that will end the citizens forum portion of the meeting, we will address, our discussion is public, and when that ordinance is read, we will have our discussion, and you'll be able to hear what the opinions are here, or there, and then, there's an opportunity at the end of the meeting for the, citizens forum will be reopened, so, if anybody wants to speak again at the end, unfortunately, have to wait till the end, so, thank you. Item eight is the approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes of June 11th.
To make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 11th, 2018.
Second.
Motion made in second, any comments, additions, deletions, corrections? There being none, please call the roll.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Item nine is the approval of warrants. Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, President, I move we approve warrant number seven of 2018 totaling $3,596,482.88, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for June 14 of 2018 in the amount of $961,955.78, the general sewer fund payroll for June 28th, 2018 in the amount of $634,176.98, general fund disbursements number seven of 2018 in the amount of $1,622,621.89, sewer fund disbursements number seven of 2018 in the amount of $167,699.22, community development block grant fund disbursement number seven of 2018 in the amount of $70,088.88, capital project fund disbursement number seven of 2018 in the amount of $128,336.73, following the credit card statement ending June 27, 2018 in the amount of $11,603.40.
Motion made in second by Mr. Siegel.
Mr. President, our township auditor has been through these warrants, any questions that the, his review of the warrants have raised, have been raised with appropriate township personnel, and those questions have been answered to his satisfaction, it's his recommendation as well as my own that these warrants be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes, any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Item 10, ordinance P.13, 2018.
Mr. President, President, I move we adopt the first reading of ordinance number P.13 of 2018, an ordinance authorizing the incurring of non-electoral debt by Havreford Township to refund the existing 2010 and 2013 general obligation issues, and to borrow new monies to finance the cast, sorry, the cost of certain capital projects of the township, providing for the issuance of a series of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $50 million.
Second.
Motion made in second by Mr. Siegel.
Mr. President, as you recall, this in the work session in June, our guest, gosh, I forgot your name, Jamie, Mrs. Schlesinger, presented to us the opportunities we have of refunding the 2010 and 2013 general obligation bonds that we have, and Ms. Cuthbertson has, has also, over time, provided to us the, the future borrowings that we need, this is the first step, tonight, we're not incurring any debt, but it is the first step in, in the, the bond issue that we wish to do, to refund the 2010 and 2013s, to save hundreds of thousands of dollars, and to borrow the monies we need for the capital projects that we've identified already.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes, any questions or comments from any other commissioners?
We do have our bond counsel with us tonight, Mr. Richter, if anyone has any questions for him, and we do have Mr. Schlesinger here, our financial advisor, if anyone has any questions, we did have a very good presentation in our last work session about these issues.
No questions, please call the roll.
D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Item number 11 is ordinance P.11, 2018.
Ordinance, ordinance number P.11, 2018, property tax credits qualifying volunteer firefighter, second reading, motion to adopt a second reading of ordinance number P.11, 2018, amending and supplementing ordinance number 1960, as amended known as the general laws of the township of Havreford, further amending chapter 165, taxation, article 6, property tax credit to qualifying volunteers of Brookline, Bon Air, Lanark, Manoa, and Oakmont Fire Companies.
Second. Give it to Jerry.
Motion's made, and?
I apologize, who seconded that? Jerry.
Dr. Hart did, and this was a qual-, you know, this was changing, cleaning up the language per Director of Finance, any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Item 12, ordinance P.12.
Number P.12, 2018, traffic, second reading, motion to adopt a second reading of ordinance number P.12, 2018, authorizing restrictions on the following highways, rescind from Havreford Township ordinance 17599, schedule 24, sticker parking only on Cathmere Road, both sides unit block through the 400 block of Cathmere Road, and establish 17599, schedule 24, sticker parking only on the 100 block of Cathmere Road, on school days, 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, valid parking exempt.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis, any questions? Gentile, please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel? Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Item 13.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P. 14, 2018, further amending and supplementing chapter 86, fire prevention, section 86.5, additions, deletions, and modifications to the fire prevention code and adding provisions for false fire alarms.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any questions on this?
Point, the fire departments are having a lot of problems with the false fire alarms. And we're clarifying the penalties to try to, they're not getting responses from contractors. So ultimately, the contractors could lose their ability to get a permit in the township if they do not pay the violations.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And this is where my page goes blank here. Is there an item 14 or?
Yeah, 14 is the bee ordinance.
Ordinance, number P. 15, 2018, maintenance regulations relating to beekeeping activities on residential properties, the first reading. Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P. 15, 2018, further supplementing chapter 49, animal control. Article four, animal maintenance regulations and establishing sections 49, 10, dash, one with regulate, with requirements relating to beekeeping activities on residential properties.
Motion's made. Is there a second? Mr. Holmes, is he second?
Second, for discussion.
Okay. Motion made in second. Can you, can somebody explain this?
Explain it, Bill. Well, what happened in my neighborhood was that the, apparently, one of the beekeepers, I guess it's nobody in here, but I don't know who it was, but one of the beekeepers called a neighbor on Oxford Road and asked if he could bring his bees over on the property. And the gentleman said yes. But they went away for two weeks. And apparently, the beekeeper put these bees in the wrong place. That's the best I can say, as far as that, because another beekeeper came along to straighten the problem out. In the meantime, about eight of the people on Oxford Road were bitten by bees, and three children were bitten by bees. And the mailman was bitten at least three times by bees and refused to serve mail to the neighbors on Oxford Road. So I feel that somebody should be responsible for this. Either the beekeeper who brought the bees over and left them apparently in the wrong spot, from what the other beekeeper said, or the people who granted permission to leave the bees there, but not be there.
Okay, so, that, I mean, I understand that situation, Commissioner McGarrett, but this ordinance, I think, goes a little bit farther than that. And it, I mean, I had an incident on Golfy Road last year where a post, a postal employee refused to serve because of dogs. And they were delivering it to the street. And we're not going to ban dogs on Golfy Road. So I, I understand what you're saying about that particular situation, but I think, you know, this, this statute, as it's written, goes, goes too far in terms of outlawing any beekeeping throughout the township. And so I would therefore, you know, I, I would be against this.
Now, Kevin, to be honest with you, this isn't outlawing any beekeeping in the township. What this is saying is that somebody has to be responsible for their actions. If somebody's going to bring bees over and they play, and these beekeepers know where to place these different bees, they have them down at Grange Estate, Mr. Downs came over, who has bees in his backyard, nobody ever has any problems with these bees, but what, what we're saying is that somebody has to take responsibility, either the person who brought the bees over and just dropped them to a home where nobody was home for two weeks. So it's, it's not picking on anybody and not saying bees aren't allowed in the township. We're just saying there has to be a responsibility here, and somebody has to take that responsibility.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lewis?
Can I ask that you read this ordinance, because it's not coming up on my computer?
Right.
And I think they, they, they should have the benefit of knowing exactly what it is requiring, and then we can have a discussion about it.
Sure.
Thank you.
I've.
But I'd do it, but doesn't, it's not coming up on my screen, so.
Right. It says, whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, order to protect the health and welfare of its citizenry, hereby establishes requirements relating to beekeeping on residential property. Administrative Code of Chapter 49, Animal Control, beekeeping is hereby established as follows. Purpose, the purpose of this chapter is to avoid problems that may otherwise be associated with the keeping of bees in populated areas. Notwithstanding compliance with the various requirements of this section, it shall, shall be unlawful for any beekeepers to keep a colony or colonies in such a manner or of such disposition as to cause any unhealthy condition, interfere with the normal use and enjoyment of human or animal life of others, or interfere with the normal use and enjoyment of any public property or property of others. Following term shall have the meanings indicated. An apiary, an apiary, any place where one or more colonies or nuclei of bees are kept, a bee, any stage of the common hive or honeybee, or other species of a general appus. Bee disease, any American or European foul brood, sac brood, bee paralysis or other disease, or abnormal condition of eggs, larval, pupal. Beekeeper and owner, flyway, a barrier composed of dense vegetation or man-made materials which direct the bees too quickly into the sky. Township is the Township of Haverford Hive, any frame hive, box hive, barrel log, gum, skep, or other receptacle, container, or natural, artificial, or any part thereof which may be used or employed by a beekeeper as a domicile for bees which are expected to establish a permanent nest. Registration and regulations, it shall be unlawful to keep any bees in the township except as provided herein. No beekeeper may own or maintain an apiary within the township without first registering all apiaries with the Department of Agriculture as required by Pennsylvania bee law and the appropriate sites as amended. Hive type, no beekeeper shall keep or maintain bees in any hive other than a modern movable frame hive which permits thorough examination of every comb to determine the presence of bee disease. Location of hives, location of hives must comply with the following criteria. Hive shall not be located within 20 feet of any side or rear property line. Hive shall not be located within a front yard. Hive orientation, orientation of hive must comply with the following criteria. Hive entrance, hive entrances shall face away from a neighboring property and in such a direction the bees fly across the beekeeper's property at sufficient distance to gain a height of at least six feet at the property line. If the flight path described in 4A is not feasible, then flyaway barriers may be employed to redirect the bee flight pathway above six feet. See, the flyaway barrier must be at least six feet in height and be placed along the side of the hive entrance. Barrier must be located within five feet of the hive and must extend at least two feet on either side of the hive. Water, all beekeepers in the township shall ensure that a convenient source of fresh water is available to the bees from April 1st through November 1st each year and is located closer to the apiary than any other water source. Responsibility, owner of the property on which the apiary is located shall be deemed responsible for any violations pertaining to this chapter. Enforcement, the Director of Code Enforcement or Township Animal Control Officer shall investigate and determine violations of the ordinance on any property and property owners against which a complaint has been made and issue any such orders may be necessary to carry out the provisions of the section. All township elected and appointed officials are authorized to take all action necessary to ensure the implementation effect of the purposes hereof. And then the boilerplate, it's typical, provisions of this ordinance are severable, and if any clause, sentence, subsection, or section hereof should be judged by any court of competent jurisdiction to be illegal, invalid, or unconstitutional. So such judgment or decision shall not affect, impair, invalidate the remainder, but shall be confined in its operation, application, or the clause, sentence, subsection, or section rendered. It is hereby declared the intent of Board of Commissioners that this ordinance would have been adopted if such legal, invalid, or unconstitutional clause, sentence, subsection, or section had not been included herein, effective 10 days following the final adoption by the Board of Commissioners. That's the gist of it.
Just wondering if there's a way to accommodate what Mr. McGarrett's, Commissioner McGarrett's concern is, at the same time, making sure that we have a bee.
I agree. I mean, I think we've only had two incidences, two instances of problems in.
Yeah, I don't know what the, is there a way to.
Sounds like you were concerned about, and at the same time, I don't know what, how
you all feel about this ordinance and how we should tweak it, and I don't even know where the.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know, has the ordinance committee reviewed this at all?
No.
When I got the agenda, that's, I was going to ask who drafted it, or where did we come up with the?
This from another township that were.
No, it was not the solicitor, okay.
Mrs. Cuthbertson, along with Nancy, our health inspector, put it together. Amy may be able to make a couple of comments.
I apologize, I was in the other room, so I didn't hear the beginning of the conversation. But as far as the genesis of the ordinance, staff was approached to look into this since there were some issues in one of the, in the 7th Ward. So Mrs. Garrett looked into some other ordinances in neighboring municipalities, and we tried to come up with something that was simple, yet provided some basic guidelines to help both the property owners and people in the neighborhood who were affected.
I think the bottom line here is, the people ask me, well, what do we do? Who do we call? My answer was, I don't know. Because there is nothing on the books to say anything like this. Now Owen, the animal warden, would be the person to call, and he would have some backup to what he's being called for. And the only thing I'm saying is, when you have a couple little children bitten by bees, and there was at least six adults, six different homes, and the mailman, who wouldn't even serve the homes for a whole week. So that's all I'm saying is, this thing didn't go for one or two days, it went for seven days.
Can I suggest that we refer this to the ordinance committee and have them try to address Commissioner McGarrett's concern? And also have the benefit of input from bee enters, to see if there's some middle ground here that we can reach that.
I would agree with that. I think, I think if we take a thoughtful approach, let the ordinance committee review it, coordinate that with bees, maybe get some information, where obviously, members of the ordinance committee aren't going to be bee experts, but it looks like we have some in the neighborhood that could provide some input to Commissioner Siegel, as the Chair of that committee. And if you would, if those members in the bee community would be so kind as to write, Commissioner McGarrett's email is on the, on the website, and he has a fairly significant website, if you want to leave comments on there, to give him some input. Siegel, I'm sorry. If, Mr. Siegel, if you would do that, and then we would do that. So I guess at this point, we would want to table this for today's evening and refer it back to the ordinance committee.
And also address Commissioner McGarrett's.
Correct.
Try to, try to find that middle ground, if we can.
Correct. All in favor of remanding this back to the?
Motion to table.
Motion to table? All in favor?
I don't have a problem with tabling, Bill. The only thing I want is something on the books where the people would have somewhere to call, whether it's Owen or the police.
Jim, I totally agree. I think we just need to take a.
I have nothing against the beekeepers. A lot of them are my friends, and like I say, they, they're down at Grange, never had one complaint at the Grange with the beekeepers. Never had one complaint with Mr. Downs at 203 Sagamore Road. Just this one person just dropped them and left. And he dropped them, and from what I was told, he absolutely dropped them in the wrong place.
Okay. So is there anyone opposed to tabling? Motion to table's passed. Back to the ordinance committee. And Mr. Siegel would be the point for any beekeeper information, to provide him with any information so we can make an intelligent thing and solve this on the middle ground, as Mr. Lewis suggests.
Thanks for coming, James.
Thank you. Thank, and Mr. McGarrett, thanks for bringing it up. I mean, it's an issue that obviously needs to be addressed, so appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is ordinance, is number 15, ordinance P. 16, 2018.
Mr. President?
Mr. Siegel?
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P. 16, 2018, authorizing the amended and restated lease agreement with Unisight Omnipoint PA Tower Venture LLC for certain land areas located at the Township Public Works Site off of 2080 Old West Chester Pike, subject to review by the Township Solicitor and further subject to the approval of the Township Manager, the final document.
Motion made? Second? Second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
He's out.
I'm sorry. In the back room, and Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
16, ordinance P. 17, 2018.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P. 16, 2018, authorizing the amended and restated lease agreement with Unisight Omnipoint, Omnipoint, Pennsylvania Tower.
Mr. McGarrett, the next item, ordinance P. 17, 2018, item 16.
Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P. 15, 2018, further supplementing, now that's the latest one, wait a minute. What are you on, P. 16?
Sixteen.
Sick, number sixteen.
Item 16, P. 17.
P. 17, okay. Motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance P. 17, 2018, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Through traffic restricted, addition, Darby Road, medium crossover of exit entrance of Haverford Township Building, 1014 Darby Road, do not enter an emergency unauthorized vehicle only. I think that's already up there, isn't it, John?
Not yet. And then, there's another portion of this, Mr. McGarrett.
But the signs up there, there's no ordinance for it.
Okay.
And then, just finish the ordinance with special park, purpose parking, please.
Wait a minute. Oh, special parking, okay. Special purpose parking on Roosevelt Avenue and Harding Avenue along the side of 201 Harding Avenue, Haverford Town, PA.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Now, now you can ask the question, yeah.
Can I, can I add, in addition to that, right turn onto Darby? From the driveway? Right turn only.
This is amendment to add right turn only as you come out of that driveway. Is that acceptable, Mr. McGarrett?
Yeah.
That would help. It's on. That, that would help with the enforcement of that crossover for right turn only on the Darby Road, to prohibit those cars crossing over.
That's accepted.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
And Mr. Holmes, still in the back room, I apologize. And Mr. Wexler?
Yes. On the, item 17, resolution 2095.
Mr. President?
Mr. Siegel?
Motion to adopt resolution 2095, 2018, authorizing the Township Manager to take all steps necessary to record the meetings of the Haverford Township Zoning Board for rebroadcast on the Haverford Township cable channels in a fiscally responsible manner.
Second. All right. At this, we, we do have correspondence from the zoning hearing board. At this, we, we do have correspondence from the zoning hearing board. We asked our solicitor to get involved with their solicitor, I guess, when we passed the filming of, or the permission to film the planning commission, they were broken into two separate hearings. That being done, they've taken official action to do that. I'm not sure that this resolution is absolutely necessary. I've, the Township Manager, from what I gather, we are all in favor of this. I think we just need a formal yay or nay to authorize the Township Manager the expense, to cover the expenses of this.
No, it's revenue neutral, is that right? I mean, it's supposed to be revenue neutral.
That's what the purpose is.
Yeah, I mean, the fees are gonna cover it, increased fees, so, just authorizing the expenditure, because it's, I think it's gonna come, go above $10,000. So, is there anyone that's opposed to allowing the Township Manager to expend those funds to provide this taping?
Mr. Chairman, may I just bring something up?
Sure.
I received an email from Mr. Kane, the chairman of the zoning board, and I sent a transcript of their official meeting on 6/21/18 where they officially held a public-
Right, that's, that's the correspondence I was referring to earlier.
But I, I think that there's some other issues, if you read the transcript, that I think our solicitor still needs to discuss with the zoning board solicitor.
Right. The only, the only thing is, that I see in there, there's some administrative issues that the staff-
That's all I'm, I'm just trying to-
Will have to, Mr. Gentili and the staff will work over where they, when they need to meet an executive session or private, whether or not the room that was offered to them was completely soundproof or they had to use the back room.
Yeah, I just wanted to first point out that as Dan had said there wasn't a public meeting, we did, they did have a public meeting. I just wanted to put the date out there, and that there are still some administrative issues that they really should work out with.
And I think I've, in speaking with Mr. Gentili, I think by the time we get the staff on board and trained, we will be prepared to start filming in September, I guess.
But there are also not administrative issues that are gonna affect the televising of the meetings, we can proceed with that.
Right. We're gonna, we're gonna start, it's a training issue for staff to operate the equipment here, so that we don't have the poor young lady, Ally, in here every night of the week. So, that staff is being hired and trained, and the estimate from Mr. Gentili and our IT director is that September they'll be ready to start televising all those meetings, so. Also, if we're in agreement that Mr. Gentili can expend the funds revenue neutral or in a fiscally responsible manner, I don't see any need to proceed with the vote on this.
I would ask for a vote, please.
Okay, we can, we can do that, if you wanna-
Yes.
I think that having to vote is like voting for a resolution that says this is Monday, July 9th.
Well, we did it for the planning commission, so if it, all, all in favor of this resolution?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, item 18.
Opposed.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
I'm in favor of televising, I just don't think it's a, it's a completely moot, unnecessary resolution.
I agree with Mr. Lewis.
It's just like saying it's, resolution saying it's Monday, July 9th.
I'm trying back to-
We know it, we've already gotten consent.
We have two nays, let's move to item 18 then. Item 18 is res-
Can I ask a question about televising? Do we have the ability to televise our own meetings live?
We, we do.
Okay, when, when will we start doing that?
We can do that at any time.
Start do that, I, I think we should start doing that immediately, if that's an option.
Don't know, I'd have to check with Mr. McGarrett.
I did ask, in passing, I did confer, it's a matter of flipping a switch and doing it. He has some concerns about what's picked up on your microphones, but if nobody else is concerned, that's fine. We can, we can flip the switch and we can go public, publish this live. Is it, yep, is anybody opposed?
Let's do it.
Mr. Gentili, if you would please discuss with Mr. McGarrett.
No problem. If Rick can turn the switch on, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Item 18, preliminary land development, resolution 2098-2018. Railroad Avenue. Mr. Lewis, I guess, is that you?
Where is this now?
Item 18.
19.
Hold a second, I gotta find it on my computer. Is it 18 or 19?
Item 18, resolution 2098, preliminary land development.
Number 2098-2018, motion to adopt resolution 2098-2018 approving the preliminary land development plan for 986th and 996 Railroad Avenue, subject to the recommendations of the planning commission.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Siegel, second. Any questions or discussion? Any questions or discussion on this?
There were some waivers in there, I wasn't clear on what we were-
We have, we have both, Ms. Pianzio, who's the applicant for the lawyer, as well as Kelly, could you-
Good evening, I'm Kristen Pianzio, I'm the attorney for the applicant. I didn't know how little or much you wanted to hear from us tonight, I was sitting quietly, hoping the vote would just fly by. But I've been recognized, this is for the redevelopment of 986 and 996 East Railroad Avenue. We've been to the planning commission with a sketch prior to filing our zoning hearing board application. We revised that application to include another driveway to appease some of the neighbors relative to traffic being, traveling through the residential neighborhoods, so now we've added a driveway on Haverford. We did a traffic study, we went to the zoning hearing board, the neighbors and the, some people who are interested in the historic items appeared. We had lengthy discussion about the variances that we needed and, and the wall and access. We did get an approval from the zoning hearing board with conditions. We went to the planning commission and resue, and received unanimous recommendation for preliminary plan approval, including three waivers. And they are outlined in the resolution, all of which I've gone over with your solicitor with a couple of tweaks, I think we're in agreement as to its content.
I just wanna make sure that, since that was just today, that we had the red line version of the, of the resolution, that everybody has the correct resolution with them. Resolution, and maybe Kelly, you can help us with that, did that make it to the packages?
I don't believe that the packages were sent out.
Right, okay. So they, but so that, just so that, so that nobody thinks there's anything different going on, just the, the, suggest that changes were actually clarifications of, of, not changes to anything as much as clarifications to what was in the other ordinance, correct?
Correct. Correct.
And one of those, one of those was to take the, I think the resolution before the board says that the conditions that were contained in the engineer's letter are to be abided by, and with the proposed change of resolution is, spells out each of those conditions, so that there's no doubt as to what those conditions are.
Correct. Some of the conditions in his letter are not in here because they were discussed and, and dismissed. So, all I did was clarify that the conditions contained herein are those in his letter that will abide by. The waiver sections had S's instead of 5's, so I fixed that. And then, we agreed that if the open space ordinance section applies to us, that we would recommend a fee and lieu. I would like to have some conversation with you about that.
Right. And your question would be whether the, whether the open space provision applies at all because there, because it's a redevelopment as opposed to a new development?
Correct, Mr. Byrne, yes.
And what you would prefer to do is, if the determination is made that that does apply, not provide open space, because you said you have, but rather to pay a fee and lieu.
Correct.
Kelly, did you had a chance to review all this?
I did.
And you were okay?
We were very minor.
Could, could we just, for the edification of people watching this, it's a preliminary land, could you just tell us what the use is? I mean, what, is it, is it a residential or commercial project or whatever? A lot of legalese went by, but nobody knows what's going on, so.
And we wanted to give slides, but we know that everyone's not up and running with the-
Okay. Just in broad terms, in simple.
Those, but I have a board that I can show you just to give you some information.
I mean, just as, what's, what's going there? What, it's being the-
This building.
Okay.
Right now, there are two buildings there. The idea is to raise those buildings and construct a three-story, 20,439 medical office building.
Okay. Just so the people know at home.
And, and I'd like to point out that we added extra parking so that we didn't have the overflow that the neighbors were afraid of. We went, that was part of our zoning application, was to have a front yard setback to actually put more parking in than we were required, so.
You just wanna hold that up, and then our cameras will be able to pick that up, and the board can see it as well.
So, it's a 20, it's a, it's a medical office building development?
Correct.
What kind of office building? I mean, who's, is it a health system, or?
It's-
It's gonna be owning that, if we would-
No, it's, we call it BIMSA, it's the Brimmar Medical Specialist Association. Their CEO is here, our entire team is here if you have questions. But they are a doctor group that already exist. They were at 933 Haverford, they're now at the, what's the building we call it next to the hospital? The pavilion at the hospital where the bridge is that connects to the hospital, they occupy that building, as well as the chapel. So, this is just another office for them, maximum of seven doctors at any time, Monday through Friday, nine to five.
Thank you very much.
I just ask about the building materials, do you, the aesthetics of the outside, the exterior, do we, do we have any sense of what that might be? And is there a possibility to consider some kind of stone facade or something, veneer or something that's, makes it more attractive? I just raised it as an issue, because I think it would be, it's kinda, it's the welcome to the Haverford Township, it's the corner of our township. It would be nice to have something that's aesthetically-
Understood.
Attractive.
We've had numerous staff meetings, feedback has been constant, they've been great. Kelly and Lori alike have given us feedback from planning commission members, residents, commissioners, to see what we could do to incorporate some of the aesthetics that are in the existing building, and the stone look into the building. We're at the preliminary stages, so we don't know yet exactly, because we just are now working on the floor plan. But hearing those comments from you, the architects are both here to hear your comments and your recommendations, so we'll definitely walk away with those and see what we can do to incorporate. I know there was some interest in the windows, we're gonna see if we can do something on the interior. On the exterior, we think it'll be problematic due to their age and the look of the building, so we have taken that into consideration, see what we can do to bring those elements, keep them there. We've done that with the wall and the exterior windows there along the wall.
And could you explain, there was a question about the sidewalk, and I know there was concern from some of the neighbors about putting the sidewalk in, and it really came down to a choice between having the sidewalk or having the wall, is that correct?
Yes, yes. We were balancing two competing items. People who wanted to save the wall, those that were interested in the historic features of the wall, wanted the wall to stay.
Yeah.
If the wall stays, we can't, we have no room for sidewalk, there's about this much room between the wall and the right-of-way, so.
So, there's no room on the, on the other, on the roadside of the sidewalk, of the wall?
Right.
And then, there was a suggestion made by some of the neighbors about trying to bring the sidewalk inside the wall and then outside the wall again, and I think there was a liability issue-
Right.
From your standpoint, is that what you're, and lighting and so forth?
Sure, that wall is high, we don't, we don't want a private easement and a sidewalk on our private property behind that wall, we think that's just asking for trouble, so.
Yeah.
It was really a choice of sidewalk or wall. And the planning commission was very honest and forthright with us, some members felt the wall should come down and put in the sidewalks, and I said, I get it, one group wants the wall, one group wants the sidewalk, I can't do both. The zoning hearing board, however, attached a condition to our relief that the wall remain. So, we are now stuck with that.
Walls, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, I would just urge you to be, address the aesthetics of the exterior as best you can and-
Will do.
Make it as attractive as possible. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
No.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, we'll see you back for final approval.
Thank you. Item 19, resolution 2099.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Motion to adopt resolution number 2099 2018 authorizing Township Manager sign the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program project funding agreement on its behalf.
Second.
Motion made in second by Mr. Siegel. No questions? Please call the roll.
I'm sorry, can I just find out what this is?
Yeah, it's the, it's what, part of the grants that we discussed earlier this evening. This one is the, the flashing lights that will be put across our new crosswalk on Darby Road into the middle school.
Right. Automated Red Light Enforcement Program. Are we doing cameras?
No, that's the crossing flashing lights-
Got it.
-at the crosswalk.
Just wanted to make sure we weren't becoming Philly.
Our what?
We're in Philadelphia.
I got one of those, I was like, that's not my car, and then they zeroed in, they could actually see me driving.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 20, purchases.
Skadium fire alarm replacement. Motion to authorize the purchase of installation of a new carbon monoxide and fire alarm system at the skadium for Unified Order Incorporated Drexel Hill PA in the amount of $17,970.
Second.
Motion made in second.
Can I make it just a quick comment? I had already authorized this because I felt that it was an emergency purchase, so this is just-
Getting our formal approvals.
So, the motion is to validate the-
My purchase.
Correct.
In fact, the work is 90% done. But it's an improvement to the inside of the skadium.
Right. So, you've answered, you've answered a couple of different issues with that. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Dr. Hart, emergency services.
Motion to authorize the purchase of one small unmanned aerial system for search and rescue missions from Darley Defense, Itchiza, Illinois, in the amount of $38,791.63 to be paid with CDBG grant money.
Second.
Motion made in second. As stated, this is being all paid for by a grant from the state that Mr. Gentili wrote. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Dr. Hart?
Motion to authorize the Township Manager to execute a DCED emergency management grant for the acquisition of 19 Yamaha 12,000 inverters and one DJI Matrix 210 for a total amount of $50,630.99.
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Gentili, if you want to tell the public what these are gonna be used for?
Yes, this is a part of our emergency management grants that we've been writing, we've been very blessed to be getting these grants lately. And this will be a second part of an initiative that we've been doing to get inverters in the community, to power our red lights. Like, as in the past, we have had power outages last, this past winter, we've had 70, 75% of the township was out of power. However, all of our traffic enforcement lights, the red lights along West Chester Pike, sections of Darby Road, key intersections remained working, and this is the second part of a three grants that we've been obtaining.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 21.
Contract Award Flashing Warning Light. Motion to award a flashing warning light on Darby Road in front of the middle school to Charles A. Higgins in the amount of $52,078, submitting the lowest responsible bid to be paid from the ARLE grant.
Second.
Arle grant.
Motion made in second. Any questions? This is, you want to explain this as?
This is the actual installation of those flashing lights by?
This is the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program. The Arle.
Okay. Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 22 is continuation of the citizen's form. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on any item? Does not have to be an agenda item at this time.
It can be.
It can be, that's right.
Thank you for reading the full paper. I think some of the things that I noticed, I've, I've been a beekeeper for 11 years. I've lived in Haver Town for 20 years. And so, some of the things in that were really, I think, very responsible ways to keep bees. One of the things I'd like to point out is, without making any comment on the, you know, qualifications of the beekeeper, to put them on the other property, I don't personally know them or am not familiar with the situation. But bees are typically moved two to four miles away because of their, whenever you move a hive, because of their navigation and how they navigate back to the hive. So from my beekeeping experience, I would guess that also played a role. And one of the things that I noticed was also that having bees 20 feet from every property line, I understand that's a general thing that a lot of the township rules have for animals like, I know that the chickens, ordinances, and other animals like that. But I don't think that it applies as well to bees. I personally have bees in the back corner of my yard where they are enclosed, and we've never had a problem with them. That puts them within 20 feet of three neighbors' property lines, and none of those neighbors have ever had a problem with them. You know, we've, we've had complaints about our dog, we've had complaints when we used to have chickens. You know, they've even complained about me and my siblings, like the kids, but we've never had a complaint about bees. And I think that there's a lot of responsible beekeepers who would be unduly harmed by having those location problems. In terms of the bee, the no bees in the front yard, I wouldn't consider putting bees in my front yards too close to the driveway. I know there's a lot of different layouts of different houses in Haver Town because of the rich history we have as the township was built, and there may be some front, like technically, front yards that are completely appropriate for bees. The other thing that I would recommend, as you rewrite the ordinance, would be that you talk to the Pennsylvania State Beekeepers Association. They have a committee that helps townships write ordinances on honeybees with some of the most knowledgeable beekeepers in the country providing input, as well as lawmakers. So they're a really tremendous resource. I'm also happy to donate my time to do that. And the other, the other thing that I think is important is looking at each individual situation. I have personally, a few years back, registered and made contact with the animal control officer. I don't know if they still have my contact information, but I provided my Pennsylvania State Beekeeper's license and gave them my number. That way, if there was an emergency call with bees, they would know, they would have me to call. I keep bee suits in my truck, and I have other beekeepers that I can call upon as well. Because sometimes, you know, whether it's the American honeybee, or whether it's a, another bee, you want someone knowledgeable in that area. And I know several other beekeepers who would be open to providing that help as well should another situation like this arise. So again, I'm open to helping in any way that I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I wish I had your number when I knocked a beehive down from behind my gutter. Yes, ma'am.
I am the person that you're speaking of. My company, Believers.
You put the bees there?
We put two hives there a year ago. They were there, and they were quiet, and they bothered no one.
Oh, really?
And one hive died, or started to die out. We combined them, and that hive got bigger. And when it overwintered, for some reason, it got nasty. So we tried to quell the problem by dividing the hive up so that it wouldn't bother anybody in the neighborhood. And we were on top of it the whole time. The young lady whose two children were stung, I know her because I communicated with her via email, IM, and texting. I forget her name right now, but that, I do. I, I went to her, we went to her husband, we talked to her, and we did what was best for the bees and the situation. So we did break it down, and we moved part of the hive away. We needed to see if that worked, so we had to wait a little bit of time. So we waited about a week. It didn't work. So I did communicate with her again, and in the meantime, another woman saw me in my bee suit, and she came up. And she said, they're in my pool. I said, okay. I said, so there's got to be more done here. So we split it down again, and we moved, that is the back of 430 Manoa Road. There, there are clients. They asked for two beehives last year, and they built up. So there was more bees at the end of the year than they started with. That's how it happens. So what we did was we moved more of the bees out. And we moved, because my client still wanted beehive, she was trying. Now, she was away for two weeks while this was happening. That's where the miscommunication happens. They were in Europe, but I was in communication with her, too.
Yeah, but you weren't in communication with any of the neighbors. That's the problem. We had all these people bitten in the mail. The people didn't receive their mail for five days.
Let's just let her finish at the form, and then we'll.
I, but, but here, here's the thing, though. I was in communication. I wrote a letter, and I delivered it, hand-delivered the letters to seven homes right in that area that I knew were being harassed by the bees. I moved the last portion of the bees up front on Manoa Road. They've got big bushes, and I made it face their house, away from anybody else.
All right, we, I, I think we're, we're kind of delving. If you have information that we need to intelligent-write the ordinance, but I don't want to go back and rehash past things, so, okay.
I just want you to understand that no matter what was happening, I was really on top of it. I called the.
No, I truly believe you were trying, yeah.
At the post office, I mean, why would I not be on top of it?
Right, I'm just saying, we, we can't go back in time, so let's, we need the information that you guys can have for.
So what I want to say, though, is the 20-foot would literally essentially stop beekeeping in Haver Town because most people don't have the property line 20 feet. So I, I feel responsible that this is being brought up, and I feel horrible because I know people who have kept bees in Haver Town for a very long time and have had no difficulties. And then I have this difficulty, and I also had a difficulty in your area, and I wrote to you immediately, did I not? Do you remember the, on, across from the VFW?
Rest.
Okay, yes. And, and I got in contact with Mr. McCloskey immediately.
Okay.
So I just want to say that if, if this is going to harm other beekeepers, I'd rather move out of Haver Town and take my bees with me than harm anybody else's ability to have bees. It's, it's not fair.
Well, let's, let's hope we can come to a happy medium, that we can avoid that. We've got chickens, we can have bees, so.
I'm totally.
All right, I'm drawing the line at snakes and spiders. Sorry. I'm just going to warn.
But thank you for your, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe you could also provide, if you have, if you have thoughts about how you could address what happened here, and so it, so it doesn't possibly not happen again.
I would be willing to.
I don't know whether there's a way to avoid it.
I don't know if there is either.
If there's a way to do it, so we don't have the situation repeated.
We've already stopped putting in hives in, unless they have enough room between neighbors. We've already stopped that.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
And just, when the ordinance committee, I agree with Mr. Lewis, when the ordinance committee looks at this, I just, for our edification, we'd like to know what exactly happened that caused that problem. Because I don't know anything about bees. I need to, for me to understand or to vote on something, I need to know what went wrong also.
Correct. I mean, I, I think we need all the, we need a lot more information to make a decision, and that's why it's going back, and, and we, we get that information.
I appreciate you guys coming here and taking ownership, but we need, just need to know what happened.
Okay.
Again, I'm sorry to take up your time. My name is Samuel Krakow, 430 Lenark Avenue, owner of Believers. I also take responsibility for the actions that occurred on Oxford Road, and we did everything in our power to relieve the situation. I just wanted to say that we've been active beekeepers for three years. We have over 37 hives in and around the area, and we are trying to do it in the most responsible and respectful manner possible. We've changed our behavior in terms of how we manage our hives and haven't had an incident since, as we've revised our behavior in terms of our beekeeping practices. And I do not wish for any incident that happened on Oxford to influence anybody's ability to have a bee, a beehive, or to run a responsible business. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your sincerity. Any other members of the public? That concludes our citizen's form. Oh, I'm sorry.
One more, just one more. I'm just going to emphasize, hi, I'm Tina Friels. I'm at 216 Walnut Place, over by Chatham, in Chatham Village. I also donate some of my time to The Grange. Bill Downs also got me into my bees. I just wanted to say that the 20 feet from the property line will damage people from keeping bees. I have mine along my property line, but they face towards my house, so the activity is in my own property. If I had moved them 20 feet from the house, or from the property line up against my house, they would shoot out towards my neighbors. So I kind of keep them in. Two of my neighbors came today. They've had a number of parties already this summer, and not a bee on their property bothering their guests. So if I can help out in any way possible.
Okay.
Distance from property lines.
Well, I think you guys, you, you bring in expertise that we don't have. Facing, which way makes a difference is where they go, and I think that's important information that we can give to the people that are going to fine-tune this ordinance for us.
Exactly.
So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have to come up to the microphone, then.
I think it's important to consider, and I'm very grateful for your time and listening to everyone's opinion, but it's also very important to consider that even though bees are, you know, not, you know, a standard, like, house pet, or even, like, a little bit obscure, that, you mentioned we had two incidences in recent, or one instance in recent memory of someone getting, you know, a big problem with bees. You look at the incidences of people's dogs escaping and biting people, you know, other things that happen with people having dogs, people getting, or, dogs are a great example. They escape, sometimes they, sometimes they bite people, sometimes they go after people. But we think nothing of it because a dog is like a standard house pet that we all take for granted. You know, bees are a little bit different. There's lots and lots of beekeepers, and there's never a problem. And then sometimes, there might be one or two problems. So I think it's just important to have that perspective when we look at these cases. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else before I close it? Okay. New business, any items for new business? Other business, Mr. D'Amelio?
Uh, yeah, just one. I want to speak about the, the police, the crime update that Chief Viola gave, and talking about these, these gangs, these East Coast gang. Remind residents of the first ward, in fact, all the wards, that unfortunately, don't leave anything valuable when you're going to the dog parks, or when you're going to some of our parks. And put, put your valuables in, in the trunk if you can. That's the only suggestion I can make, Chief, let you.
Don't bring it at all.
Or don't bring it at all, but sometimes you have to.
Yeah, and, and I think people just feel secure, that when they get out, either go to work out or go to the dog park, they leave their belongings in the back seats, or, you know, it's going to be close proximity, but very quickly it happens. So our suggestion is leave it at home, or lock it in the trunk.
Now, is this crime wave, is this growing, this East Coast gang? Is this what this is called, am I saying that? Is it called the East Coast gang?
It is called the East Coast gang, yes. It is growing. In fact, I just was reading an email from Marble PD. On Saturday, they had the same incident up at their Veterans Park up on Lawrence Road. So it's local, but it's along the whole East Coast, and it is growing. It's, it's almost becoming an epidemic. We, we see reports from all over the country.
So up and down the neighborhoods, is it your belief that, I guess this is accurate, that they're going in the middle of the night to?
Well, there's two, two separate things here. The East Coast gang are ones breaking into cars during the day.
Okay.
The nighttime cars enter are kids or young adults from different areas coming in, walking up and down driveways. We have videos from, from homeowners who have the video cameras, and we see them walking up, trying doors, trying the car doors, and walking away until they find one. But what happens is, a lot of people will leave a key fob in their car, if they find out they'll steal the car also.
Okay, so can you continue to keep us updated on any progress with this?
I certainly will.
These gangs?
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. McCloskey?
Just a reminder, the last of the Summer Trail Running Series at the Crick would be on Wednesday, July 25th. So if you have the opportunity to get out, it's a, it's a, it's a nice run. Quickly, just want to thank a lot of the volunteers and neighborhood associations throughout the township and in the third ward who performed, you know, a, a great act of community service by running Fourth of July activities. This year, there was, it was a pretty hot and humid day, but there were large crowds. I know at the event the Oakmont Fire Department hosted at Grantsland Park, and there was a large crowd at the Merwood Parks, Merwood Park for their, for their Fourth of July activities. And I know in lots of other places in the township as well. And most of them are all volunteer-run, so I think it's a tribute to our community, and just want to thank those volunteers. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Siegel?
First, I want to just thank the board for voting to televise the zoning board and planning meetings. It's, I think it's important that township residents be able to see the operation of all boards, including this, and if we go live, I think that's also a benefit if we can do it. The other, only other thing I want to report on is, on June 20th, I co-sponsored a shredding event over direct paint and collision, and we, in three hours, we, besides receiving tons of thank yous, shredded 5,660 pounds of paper. And to give you an idea of what that is, because I was trying to do a visual equivalent, we determined that that would, if it were stacked, it would be the approximate height of Comcast I. So that's a lot of paper. One, that didn't go into the trash stream, two, that gets actually transported to Canada where it's recycled, and three, people were disposing of old documents that should be disposed of that way. We saw someone throw a 1994 1040 form into the bin. So people save a lot of things, and it was a great event, and I thank everyone who participated.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the South Ardmore Betterment Alliance and all of its volunteers for a terrific, terrific July 4th event. It's the 14th event that I've been at with that group, and they do a great job. That evening, it seemed like we had a lot of amateur rocketeers for the first time in Haverford. I didn't hear any reports from the police as to whether or not there was any uptick in injuries. And I'll give you the floor in a second, but I will certainly tell you, it took us three days to coax our dog from out from under our bed, so if they repeal that fireworks ordinance, I will be the first person signing on to that, so. But Chief, do you, anything to report on any proliferation of the higher gram?
We had, we had a rise in the incidents, obviously, and complaints, which we normally get, but the concern this year was the aerial rockets, not so much the firecrackers. And you could see them throughout town, people were setting them off their backyards. That's a serious concern. By law, state laws, 150 feet away from an occupied structure. So the concern is, people don't realize it, but what goes up comes down, and they're still hot. So luckily, we had no incidents of fires, but my concern is, as it gets more popular now, as New Year's Eve coming up, or Labor Day, or whatever, it's going to, it's going to cause serious concern for, not just us, for the whole area.
And in the middle of a heat wave, it may, we, we probably need to recognize that there may be times when we need to warn people, this is, if you're going to blow off fireworks, this is not the week to do it, when we go five, six, eight days without rain.
Correct.
And one hot rocket coming back down can start, you know, could start a fire.
Absolutely, yes.
Well, thanks. That is all I have. I hope everybody enjoys the rest of the July. We are on for a work session, is that correct, in August?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just College Avenue update. They continue to do, incredibly continue to do work there. There are going to be lane restrictions, I understand. I think, I'm not sure exactly when they start, but I think they start in the next week or so on College Avenue, as they add that third, that turning lane. And I think the adaptive traffic signal has been installed, or will be installed shortly. So hopefully, that, that project will be completed in the next, you know, fully complete. They have some work to do at the end of the sidewalk that crosses the bridge, but hopefully that project will be done by, by the end of the month. In terms of Ardmore Avenue, I think I mentioned last month that that project will not be let till later this year, and will not start until sometime next year. So we're going to get a little bit of a reprieve here until those next projects start, which is obviously going to be more significant, have a more significant impact on our residents in the College Avenue Bridge closure. But Commissioner McCloskey and I will be holding a public hearing at some point in But Commissioner McCloskey and I will be holding a public hearing at some point in the future before, with PennDOT, to fully discuss and air that project with the public so they know what's coming, what to expect, and to voice any concerns or objections they might have. So, more to come on that, but fortunately, the College Avenue Bridge project is coming to a closure, and I won't have to talk about it anymore, hopefully. And you'll be spared listening to me. I just wish everybody an enjoyable rest of the summer and we'll see you in August.
Thank you. Commissioner McGaryty?
Okay. Well, every year, we have the firehouse, Brookline Firehouse, the last week of school, they have a little party for all the crossing guards. And I've attended just about every one, every year, and this year I was there. And basically, I know last year, they were hoping for a pay increase, and I don't think they got it. So, I mentioned the fact that I would put my money where my mouth is and bring it up at this meeting tonight. So, I certainly hope that the township, and I know we have to go 50/50 with the school district on this, would be willing to give our crossing guards more of an increase in their salaries because of the fact that we're losing more and more of them. And then, when we lose them, we have to put a police officer out in their place, and I'm sure that's more costly than a crossing guard. So, I would hope that with the conditions that they have to work in, that we would give them an increase and get the school district to go along with that also. Second thing I have is Union Methodist Church is celebrating their 100th anniversary on Brookline Boulevard. Last month, I had mentioned that Fram was president of the Grange. Some people, I guess, interpreted that as Grange Field, but it's now, it's the Grange Estate. So, I forgot to mention the fact that it was Grange Estate. And Pastor Tim at Temple Lutheran Church has invited the commissioners next Sunday to go to the Temple Lutheran Church at the, I think it was 9:30 service. I think he'd all invited us, so I, for one, am gonna take him up on that. So, I wanted to remind everybody about that. And the last I have is the Best of Luck with Kelly and Steve Wilson, who basically have been a big help, especially with our police force in fundraising and things like that, the K-9s, all the money they have raised through their food activities have gone to things like the K-9s and police, the officer that died up in Newtown. So, they raised all kinds of money, and they have started their own business, the barbecue pit, right across the street from Haver Town Post Office on Township Line Road. So, I wish them the best of luck, and they certainly deserve all of us to patronize their business, to at least try to see what they have there, because I guarantee you, it will be good. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. McGaryty. Dr. Hart?
So, I wanted to thank the members of the Penfield Civic Association and the Brookline Fire Department who donated their time for our 4th of July celebration at the Grange. I think, you know, our celebration as the others throughout the township are a reflection of the type of community that we have and of people giving their time and wanting to spend time together. Also, wanted to give an update on what's going on at Chatham Park School. There's a, behind the school, they're putting in water retention basins. This is to try to help with the stormwater runoff. We have recurrent problems, the residents on Juniper Road and Lewis Road, we have heavy downpours, have flooding. It's been a long-term issue. This will help alleviate it. It's not gonna solve the problem, but it's one more step. Would encourage residents, especially in the Chatham Park area, to consider building rain gardens. Would also help prevent the flooding further downstream or towards Township Line. You can get more information about the rain gardens either through me or go to the township. We have a great rain garden group, Haverain Garden, who can help you with information and, you know, again, you're helping your neighbors. Wow. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Hart. Before I go, Mr. Holmes is chomping at the bit, he forgot something.
Yeah, sorry. Two things I left out. Number one, for purposes of the bond financing that we addressed earlier today, we have to hold what's known as a TEFRA hearing. That's a, that is a public hearing where any public input is invited for purposes of doing tax-exempt bonds. That hearing will be scheduled for 6:15 on Monday, August the 6th. That'll be 15 minutes before our scheduled executive session and 45 minutes before our scheduled work session that night. It is not a substitute for our regular public meetings. It doesn't qualify. We don't take official action at it, but it is a meeting that we will publicize in the newspapers and a meeting that the IR, the Internal Revenue Code requires us to hold before we do any tax-exempt financing. So, thanks for that, and we will announce that in the newspaper. The other thing I forgot to say, another business, is that we are still investigating and analyzing the township's indirect investment in any gun manufacturers. I've gotten through 50% of our portfolio, and I'm waiting for a report from our other, from our other fund managers to report on any other funds that have any investments in gun manufacturers. Then, we'll analyze the cost of extricating from those investments and report back to the public on that. Our minds have been taken up lately with other issues, but it does not mean the recent gun violence in America has become any less a problem and for purposes of our investment of public funds, I think it's something that we do need to look at, and I appreciate that it's been raised by our citizens for us to look at and, if possible, and if it makes sense, to divest of those investments. So, I'll report when I have full data on that, and then the Finance Committee and the whole board will act, you know, will act as they think appropriate. That is all I have. Thanks, Mr. President.
Are you sure?
Well, I mean, if you...
No. I have two quick...
I could do a dramatic reading of the bee ordinance if you'd like.
I have two quick things. I just want to offer my sincere appreciation on behalf of the Hilltop, Manoa and North Aronim sections of the 9th Ward for the Hilltop Civic Association's 4th of July ceremony. It was a great, great day, and also to the Bonner, Manoa Fire Company's who participated not only in the parade, but in the games and the water spraying and what have. The second thing is, you may have seen on the news, both Channel 6 and CBS 10 did stories on our hometown heroes effort. If you look on our website, there's a thing that Mr. Gentili and Mr. McCanns, Director Paramedics, have put together where people are now honoring what we call our hometown heroes, typically veterans. There's pictures, they're on Darby Road, they're on Brookline Boulevard, hopefully to be on Township Line, Drexel Road, Westchester Pike, where you can submit a picture of your loved one that served in the military, and a banner goes up for a certain period of time. We charge, we don't make money on it, we offer it at cost, and then after a period of time, you get the banner back for, suitable for framing or hanging in your yard or wherever you'd like to do it. But it's a great program to honor those that have served. I've seen it in other towns. It can also be expanded later on to police officers, firemen, EMTs and emergency service personnel. But it's a great way to pay tribute to our family members who have served in the military. I know, I think Steve's putting one up for his father to honor his father. There's Victor Berg, who's our Deputy Director of Paramedics' son, who's in the Marines and is serving the Pacific Rim. He's up on Darby Road. Commissioner Kenny Richardson is up on Brookline Boulevard. He looks like a 17-year-old, he was about a 17, 18-year-old kid when that picture was taken, in his full uniform. And there's just a lot of other veterans that are going up and families are honoring their veterans. So, please take a moment to look at that on the town, it's on the front page of the township website. If you're interested, the application is there, and feel free to go ahead and do it. And I want to thank Mr. Gentili and Mr. McCanns for putting that program together. I think it's a great one, it's a great way to honor our family that have served, so that's all I have. Mr. McGaryty, I see you down there, don't...
Just one, I told some lady she called me, we passed an ordinance, what was it? The state is now allowed to sell fireworks, right? In Haverford Township, not allowed to do fireworks. Is that correct? I told this lady I...
You can set them off, as the chief said, it's, the state law supersedes our laws. You cannot set them off within 150 feet of an occupied structure. So, that's pretty much, not in any residential area that I...
I just wondered, I saw a few missiles...
We passed, we passed an ordinance about, you can sell them.
They're selling them?
We put zoning ordinance together about where we would limit fireworks stores to be because of safety and fire considerations. But you're correct, shooting off fireworks, as the chief pointed out, within 150 feet of an occupied structure is illegal in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have. If there's a motion to adjourn? Yeah.
Sorry. So, I sold them for sale, I thought I sold them for sale at the Acme. Is that legal?
Well, it would depend on what they were selling.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, some of the tents were selling projectiles, like the tents in Lower Marion over at like the Windward Shopping Center.
Correct.
I don't believe anyone in Haverford Township in any of the, in any of the prefab tents sold anything other than what they've previously sold, which is...
Well, I think what you saw, Steve, was sparklers, and that's the handheld stuff.
And just for purposes of what people understand, there's three different things regarding fireworks. There's possessing them, there's selling them, and there's shooting them off, all right? It used to be illegal in Pennsylvania, possess anything with more than five grams of what, of black powder in them, and anything that shot in the air was a projectile. It was illegal to possess it, it was illegal to sell it, it was illegal to shoot them off, unless you were licensed and all that. Now, anybody can have them. There are restrictions on where they can be sold. Local governments, including ours, has restricted very tightly where they can be sold. Then, there is a set of rules as to how they can be shot, by regular folks or by folks in licensed things. So, in my ward, in the 6th Ward, there isn't a legal spot anywhere, there isn't a square inch in the 6th Ward where it would be legal to fire off one of these things. It's just way too, way too densely populated.
I'm just concerned that, I mean, when I saw it at the Acme, didn't appear to be handheld ones, but I don't know much about it.
No, it's the things you put on the ground, you shoot them in the air. I mean, everything, I mean, just a year ago, the huge tents that were out on Route 3 out in Newtown Square, they didn't sell anything that wasn't legal in Pennsylvania. It might be a huge box, but it never leaves the ground, it just shoots sparkles and...
Commissioner, let me say this, that the next time around, whatever holiday comes up where these fireworks start to be sold, we will pay special attention to stores that, we see them, if any complaints that we have, so we can address that if need be. So, we will look into that for the next holiday, whether it be New Year's Eve when you start selling those again, or whatever else, whether it be an Acme or any other box store.
I was gonna just make one other comment. I know everybody wants to go home, but one of the things that I would personally participate in with the fire service, and I think we slacked off of them a year's ago, and it's probably the most common thing, that parents buy their kids any of these sprinklers.
It's, you can't imagine how dangerous they are. They burn at 3,000 degrees. Those sprinklers, they take out of the box. We used to do yearly, John, if you remember, we used to do yearly press releases, public awareness to educate the families, and I think we need to do a better job, and we'll work with the fire service to do that again.
Yes.
Yeah, they're rough on lawnmowers, too. Look, I rarely say this, but I put up a fight when we did that fireworks ordinance out at last time, a couple months ago. I didn't think it was necessary, and I particularly objected to the notion that it was emergent. I was wrong. I'm very glad that we did not sell anywhere in Haverford Township the kind of projectiles that I saw for sale in tents in Lower Marion and that I myself bought and fired off. So, I mean, I will, but I stand, I can still at this age be educated, and I was wrong on my position on that ordinance, so.
Thank you.
I hope that was worth sticking around.
If Mr. Holmes is done, we are adjourned.